The Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation. This evening, the invocation will be given by Commissioner Fairchild. Please remain standing for the place of leaders.
Oh gracious one, come by here again and pour out your spirit upon us. Pour out your spirit of wisdom and guidance, your spirit of peace and reconciliation. Guide us so that we make the decisions that build up our community, create a space for prosperity for all, and justice for all, and a vital community for all. Amen.
Amen.
I wish I, the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Memes.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion then to approve the minutes from the July 24th meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
Okay, so may I probably move in second to approve the minutes from the July 24th meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, thank you. Ms. Blackshear, are there any communications or petitions?
Mayor, I have received the results from the initiative petitions, mayor and commissioners, excuse me. I have received the results of the initiative petitions from the Board of Elections. Per the charter, I must now prepare a written report for the commission. I am currently working on that report, and you will receive that report at the earliest by the close of business on Friday, or at the latest on Monday. That's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So we have a presentation this evening. Mr. Steve Gondal, okay, Director of Planning, Neighborhoods and Development, to give a presentation on the demolition update for the month.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Madam Clerk. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk about our demolition stats for the month of June 2024.
Yep.
All right, last month, we saw 13 demolitions completed. A bulk of those were used in our ARPA funds. We did have one general fund and one ODOT, Ohio Department of Development-funded demolition. That's bringing us up to 132 demolitions for the year. Last month, we saw these demolitions occurring in the McFarland, Edgemont, Miami Chapel, Southern Dayton View, Five Oaks, Old North Dayton, and McCook areas predominantly. We ended May with 98 piles. It was the kind of first time we broke below 100. Unfortunately, we were able to remove seven last month, but we had seven more. And it's important to note, of six of those seven, were actually kind of like two major incidents. One was on the 2100 block of East Fourth and in the Burkhardt neighborhood. There was a devastating multi-unit fire that we had, we were called in by the Fire Department to remove four structures there. We're kind of working, kind of next steps, both with the property owners and with our housing partners as to what do we do, because it does abut some of our current housing providers in that area. So we're trying to see if we can, something good can come out of that, that area. The other was in the Ferguson and Negley area. There was two, well, it's probably under investigation, but we were ordered by the Fire Department to demolish two structures there that were set. So again, it's tough when you have these situations, especially the four-unit structure on East Fourth that kind of puts that, you know, adds, kind of basically negates the work that we had achieved. This is just the visual, again, of our activity in June for our routine demolitions, our emergency demolitions, and our supervised or kind of our total haul-out demolitions. What, you know, you and the residents of the city will see is that, again, keeping to our word, these are predominantly occurring in the ARPA focus areas, but also occurring throughout the city. So trying to touch all of those focus areas as we had promised in the Dayton Recovery Plan. To date, again, our spread, we're ensuring that using the multiple funding sources, ARPA and non-ARPA, that spreading those dollars through key areas of the city, every, you know, almost every corner of the city is being positively affected by the removal of this blight. Structures added to the nuisance list. We had another peak after kind of dropping. We had 81 structures in June. Now, I did talk to staff, and one thing I probably should clarify, and we might do an update next month, is that from January of this year, that these also include garages, and I have never kind of shared that. So while we, I am quick to jump that these, assuming these are single-family homes, when we started looking at that list, we noticed that some were just garages or maybe a commercial building. So I'm going to probably bring a little more clarification of this number so that we have a better count of, you know, I'd much rather deal with just a garage than a whole house. So, but we did, we did have an uptick here. One thing to note is, we're doing kind of a further sweep of Westwood, and 36 of these were in that area. So I don't think it comes as a surprise. Again, trying to support the work that the residents are doing there, really balancing the work that our colleagues in Public Works do with the brush removal, and following up on our housing condition survey work there. So like I said, the bulk of these are in that Westwood area. So our pipeline, we had a robust May. We're kind of dipping here in June, but you can see, again, lining up about another 100 properties with the title reports, but moving properties through the asbestos survey and remediation. We do have, we're working on a contract for 30 CDBG properties, and again, those will mostly be in the Westwood area. And then we're finalizing our recent bid submissions for the 200 ARPA properties, reviewing vendors that had submitted for that. Good news today, we heard from our colleagues in, from the land bank, that the Ohio Department of Development has asked for us to, we believe we have funding for 60 more properties in a future round of that. So, again, this Dayton Recovery Plan for demolition will involve ARPA, ODOT, CDBG, and general fund. And so to get that call today, to say, we need to go with 60 more properties. So we are working, our staff was working on that, but we've been waiting for that call since May. So we've had one first round of ODOT funding. Now, this is what we are expecting with the second one. So I'm really excited that we can put forward 60 more properties. The other good news about that is that that gives a little more flexibility as to where. So it's going to let us reach some parts of the city that we were not eligible to with the ARPA and even CDBGs. So we were really mindful that we were putting properties forward that were detrimental to communities that we, the previous funding sources would not allow. So we were able to kind of capture a number of those properties. Now, we'll, assuming the state approves our list, then we'll be, I'll bring you a future update as to moving forward on those. The visuals, so starting off, these before and afters, this is in the Five Oaks neighborhood. And, you know, I realize the first part of this presentation is really about quantitative, you know, our numbers, but we sometimes forget the qualitative effect of this work. And so the one thing, having done this for a few years, when you see or hear an address, it kind of, you know there's a tie to it, and 37 Richmond, that was a really unique property. Both architecturally, it was neat, but it was actually a drug house. And there's a lot of complications with removing that one because of the drugs that were in the house, and needles, and some of the various substances. So that was really complicated, even just to get the demolition, because of making sure that that, you know, as we worry about asbestos, sometimes when a property is affected by drug use, we have to take special precautions. So 37 Richmond, and then you'll see 348, 350 Kenwood, both in the Five Oaks, were samples of demolitions last month. Moving over into the, the top, 4518 Chesapeake, in the Residence Park neighborhood, again, just a really dynamic before and after there, and I'm sure those neighbors are thrilled. And then the bottom one, 47 Rigel, in the Carolin neighborhood, really the far northern part of Carolin, up by Elizabeth Place Medical Center. It was the last house on that stretch of property there. So that we now have removed all of those structures from that street. Swinging over into Miami Chapel, we had two next to each other, 1127 and 1129 Danner. Again, I think you just, you see the impact, you know, with the adjacent properties, they really kind of pop and shine once we're able to remove either the structure and the brush around that. And then lastly, I think these need knowledge, you know, I, again, I'm very grateful for the support you gave, me and my staff, to move forward to use general fund monies to remove these 402 Salem and 508 Broadway. Those were very, especially 508 Broadway, very complicated and time-intensive, but we are thrilled that we were able to get those out and removed from those corridors that surround the historic Dayton View neighborhood. And that is our update at this point. I will turn it over for any questions that the Mayor and Commissioners may have.
Yeah, I mean, it's great, always great to see this, the before and after, and I know my colleagues have some positive thoughts as well. Commissioner Turner Sloss.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Gondal. Thank you to you and your entire team. I really truly appreciate the monthly updates that you are providing to us. Just a couple of questions. The 60 properties that are potentially, that will be potentially identified for the ODOT funding, are we looking at, I know you mentioned that, looking at some of the targeted areas that we are unable to address, given the specu, the specifications and the constraints around some of the other funding that we have, i.e. ARPA or whatever have you. So are we going to also look at some of those properties of concern and interest on the corridors? I know that is a focus of ours, to your point, and one of the reasons why we made the conscious decision as this body to move forward with the general funding for the demolition of Salem Avenue. But again, are we going to potentially look at addressing some of the ills on the corridors with this?
Yes, so I can tell you, two significant properties, not, as not a native, but the former Grub Steak on Main will be coming down here in a matter of days.
Great.
There is a Metal Cards Building on Salem, north of, North Avenue, I believe, that will be coming down. So we were actually intentional to kind of mix it up, and we had an opportunity to hit a few big key buildings on the corridors, especially that Grub Steak, that had been so problematic. It's a very, people miss the food there, but we will not miss the problem, the elements that were occurring since they closed in terms of break-ins and theft and vandalism. So that's kind of situation where when we have unique opportunities to try to, more than just properties, structures on major corridors that were affecting gateways, we're trying to, when the, when the funding will allow us to tackle that. This 60 properties that we got clearance today, these were, we were looking, and I could, you know, roughly, mostly on the east side, right view, areas that, again, didn't qualify for CDBG or ARPA, but, and what we looked at was, they may have had less than a handful of properties. So we know that if we were able to remove those, that would then eliminate, you know, any blight they had in their neighborhood. So that was kind of our consideration.
That's awesome. Thank you. And I think we should probably send a special invite or notice to Ms. Victoria McNeil. She will be happy to see that.
She will probably be out there.
Exactly. No, Ms. McNeil, yes, absolutely. And then my final question is in regards to, I know you mentioned, I believe it was, please forgive me, on the address, maybe 108 Richmond, in terms of it was previously a...
37.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you. It was noted as a previous drug house. So what assessments are being done? Is that just working with DPD and having the history of that property? Or how are we doing that? How are we assessing other properties that may be on the demolition list that may have been used for those illicit behaviors?
Yeah, I mean, that, that was really a unique one, because what we encountered was when we went in to perform the asbestos survey, our staff realized that there was a danger there. It was more the uniqueness that they were, we had to take an extra step to safely clear the drug paraphernalia out before our contractors could do the survey for asbestos. So we don't come across it a ton, but the extent of the drug paraphernalia in there was either users or other, so it just took a little bit of an extra effort to clear it out, and to make sure that there were no either residue or chemicals that could affect, you know, again, treat it similar how we do asbestos. So I'm grateful, we don't often come across it, but it just reminded me, because it was a little bit of a extra lift to, before we could even get to the survey, the asbestos remediation, and the demolition.
Thank you again, and please extend my gratitude and appreciation to your entire team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Fairchild.
Yeah, no, really appreciate this report, and I appreciate the evolution of it. I look forward to the additional detail of the, of the structures that you're looking at for next, next month. You know, I look forward to the day when we can see like significant progress, and right now, someday, like with the piles, it feels like we're spinning our wheels. Any thoughts on, with fire, with police? I mean, it sounds like we've got an arson problem.
We, we are definitely working with our partners to look at every, to understand just, you know, movement behaviors in the area, because it does, you know, I'm no arson investigator, but we, anything we can provide, fire, police, we're, City Manager's direction, we're communicating just about where our vacancies are, where unsafe structures. So we're, you know, really trying to be mindful, listening to the community as to where people are moving. We know that as we are removing these structures, it does push people. And so as residents call in and see suspicious activity, we're all trying to be mindful. So us on the boarding side, if it's not boarded, we're making sure that we get our contractor out there. If it has been boarded, we get staff out there that day to re-board it. We'll notify police that, hey, we're having problems, this house, you know, let's just, we'll use 37 Richmond. It's routinely getting broken into daily, you know? And so we're, I think the level of communication between us, police and fire is, I mean, trying to get to this, ahead of this problem is tough, but we're at least talking.
Commissioner, Commissioner, I want to try and save Mr. Gondal here and tell him, tell you that we have, I had directed our Fire Department to pull together across collaboration and look strategically. We now have a much better handle on, you know, where all of our vacant properties are throughout the city. They are doing some analysis as to where these fires have occurred, and what they are near, and what may be driving some of that, and are bringing together a strategy, a sweeping strategy, or a strategy to try and be a little more proactive, or hopefully a lot more proactive than reactive. So I, I know they're working hard on that, and we'll have some information here in a near future, hopefully.
I appreciate that. And are these being intentionally set, or is these people are in them and, because they're using whatever for heat or cooking, they're starting?
These are a lot of vacant structures, which is likely unhoused individuals being in the property and accidentally setting fires. The Fire Department has investigators who, they're pretty, pretty on it with regards to arson. If there's a real arson activity going on, they recognize those, you know, that activity a lot, but this is more of a vacant abandoned homes being used and then getting burned down in the process.
No, I'm good. Thank you for your work, and thanks to your staff as well, and keep it up.
I'll let them know, thank you.
Same here, thank you very much. I look forward to these and keep, keep working, keep chugging away, it's going to pay off here.
All right, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Dixie, deletions or additions or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions or deletions to this evening's calendar. I do have an item that I'd like to highlight, because it will look familiar. Last week, we did an ARPA allocation to the Kinship Family Housing Project. This is our home developer agreement that we are bringing forward, and the Kinship Project is a really exciting project, it's very unique, and was, you know, led by leadership at Children's to try and solve for problems related a lot to, you know, grandparents raising children, or taking care, taking owner, or taking, ownership's the wrong word, Shelley, what is? Taking, you know, support of, you know, their grandchildren and raising grandchildren, and often not having homes that, or amenities that accommodated or could serve children well. And so this, our home agreement is $1.6 million to go towards the construction of 26 housing units for Dayton families who, you know, to provide the affordable housing to relatives who are, again, taking on kids who otherwise would go into our foster care system. And these are being built in duplexes, three-bedroom room apartments, and seven of the units due to the home agreement will be required to meet the home income guidelines. Two of those units will be fully accessible for mobility impairment, and one unit will be accessible for sensory impairment, visual or hearing. The exciting thing about this is that, you know, the $1.6 million leverages just under $13 million in federal low-income housing tax credits, in HUD community project funding, and in Montgomery Home and private funding. So this is a really great example of how we all collaborate around a good idea and bring a project forward by leveraging everyone's dollars. So I'm really excited about this. I think it's going to be a real added value to our neighborhood and to our system that helps provide supportive housing. And the other item that I will highlight is Item B5, which is a construction contract. This is an award or contract with our Water Department. This was a pipe that was being replaced with, that was installed in 1947, had experienced quite a bit of breaks. So due to its history of breakage, which you remember is one of the priority, prioritizing categories, this pipe is being replaced. We had three bids for this project, and CG Construction Utilities was determined to be the lowest for this. So excited to bring this investment to our water utility. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Blackshear, we already finished your comments. Do we have any citizens who would like to speak on calendar items?
None on calendar.
None on calendar? Okay, Commissioners, comments and thoughts on calendar items? Commissioner Turner Sloss?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Dixie, for highlighting calendar items three and five, and I would just like to uplift the work of our Department of Planning, Neighborhood Development, as well as our Water Department. Thank you.
Okay. Is that it? Mr. Fairchild?
No, I just wanted to recognize my colleague from Dayton Children's, Jessica Salam, who's here with the Kinship Program. Very excited about this program. I will need to recuse myself from that item, so if we can remove that from the, the calendar as a whole, appreciate it. Thank you.
Are you going to just abstain, or?
Well, we have to vote on it as a separate.
Separate. We do a separate.
So I can abstain.
Okay.
No, I'm good, thank you.
You're good?
Nothing here, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right, then. So let me have a motion then to separate the two items then.
I move that we accept the City Manager's recommendations with the exception of number three.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so then probably move in second to separate item number three. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Hang on, Mayor, you wanted, he said he wanted to accept them all, except number three there.
Yeah.
We're voting all, everything except number three.
Okay, so we're removing...
We're removing it.
You're approving the calendar with the exception of project item number three.
There you go.
Good.
We got it.
Okay, so all in favor, accepting City Manager's recommendations with the exception of item three, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, thank you.
Your Honor, I move that we approve item number three of the Manager's items.
Give me a second, thank you. Then probably move to approve item number three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, good.
And one extension.
And one extension. We got you.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, legislation, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading Emergency Resolution Number 6811-24, authorizing the acceptance of a cooperative agreement with the U.S. Department of State, U.S. Embassy in Bosnia and Herzegovina in the amount of $120,000 and zero cents on behalf of the City of Dayton and declaring that emergency.
Your Honor, Resolution Number 6811-24 being declared an emergency, I move for its immediate passage.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, so probably move in second. Have Resolution Number 6811-24 declared an emergency. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay.
Second reading, Resolution Number 6811-24, authorizing the acceptance of a corporation agreement, cooperative agreement with the U.S. Department of State, U.S. Embassy in Bosnia and Herzegovina in the amount of $120,000 and zero cents on behalf of the City of Dayton. Mayor Memes.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Second reading ordinance number 32104-24, to vacate Merrimott Drive from the prop, from the west property line of City Lot Number 56497 to Pershing Boulevard. Mayor Memes.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Second reading Resolution Number 6810-24, authorizing the execution of all documents and in all ways act as the authorized agent relative to the U.S. Department of Energy, DOE, through the Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy Program, Office of State and Community Emergency Programs, SCEP, for the Energy Efficient, Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program, EECBG, and the acceptance of grant funding on behalf of the Department of Public Works of the City of Dayton in an amount not to exceed $187,930 and zero cents. Mayor Memes.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
That is all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
Your Honor, there are eight citizens who have registered. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on, you will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, please be mindful, this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand-clapping, finger-snapping, and conversations that will prevent the City Commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium, Joseph Alzine.
Good evening. Due to technical difficulties, I'd like to use my time to care Ohio Director, if that's acceptable? No?
No.
Joseph Alzine, 4906 Amberwood Drive, Dayton, Ohio. Good evening. I'm here today just to give brief history, to remind you of certain events that took place many, many years ago, and fast-forwarding to 2024. In 1992, and between 92 and 95, Bosnia and Serbia went through a major ethnic cleansing of the Bosnian population that led to a Bosnia Treaty here in Dayton, Ohio. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the two combatants didn't assassinate one another. They respected each other as a civic human being. 2003, we invaded Iraq to get rid of a dictator who we claim was ruthless, and indeed, he was. We were fortunate with all the ethnic cleansing and the killing that he did for the Shia and the Kurds and the Armenians. 2009, New York PD officers sodomized a Haitian refugee using a broomstick. They were convicted. 2011, President Obama and the administration, our administration encouraged promoting democracy in the Middle East, and we know all about the spring, the Arab Spring. It eliminated a number of ruthless dictators, including the Libyan dictator. I did some research, and you have to find to be factual, between the many dictators that we got rid of, I don't think the casualties amounted to anything more than maybe 100,000 over maybe 30 years. Fast-forward to this week. Palestinian prisoners have been sodomized, and their people are asking for immunity for those people that they, that they committed this crime. We don't live in cage, and we live in civic society. This body in 2022 issued an informal resolution supporting the ICJ of taking Putin, a warrant of arrest for Putin. Instead, our government hosted a criminal last week and almost kissed his ring. Instead, our government hosted a criminal last week and almost kissed his ring because he's our salvation. Shame on them. Today, just to give you the statistics and to tell you the differences between how we behaved as moral society with the killing of innocent people and how we're behaving immorally to support helpless people that are being massacred on a daily basis. Man, that was quick.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Anna Flores.
Hi, my name is Anna. I am here with Ohio for Palestine. I am here to talk about.
For the record, please.
Oh, yes. My address is 9227 Great Lakes Circle.
Thank you.
Okay.
What's that?
I said, "Good evening."
Good evening. So I'm here to talk about the Dayton Regional Israel Trade Alliance. So far, anytime that we have spoken about DREDA to our elected officials, we are always met with the assurance that DREDA is just a partnership that, with Israel, and there are no contracts involved in this program. We've been blown off many times, and we are here to tell you that ignoring us is not acceptable. For those in the audience who don't know, the Dayton Regional Israel Trade Alliance is an economic partnership between the Dayton region and the State of Israel. Many of the contracts facilitated by DREDA are between Dayton-area weapons manufacturing companies and the Israeli government. Not only that, but DREDA also allows Israeli companies to establish themselves in the Dayton area so they can slap the label "Made in USA" on their products and profit off of our economy. Seeing as DREDA coins itself as a public-private partnership, we know that public funds are being used to contribute to this program and, as a result, are contributing to the establishment of these weapons contracts. There is no denying the existence of these contracts. There are billions of dollars of them with the likes of Sinclair College's unmanned aircraft systems, aka drones, program, as well as several national and international weapons manufacturers. It is obvious what use Israel has for these products. In fact, some of the weapons we are seeing Israel use on the innocent people of Palestine were developed here in the Dayton area. The citizens of the Dayton region did not consent to a relationship with the State of Israel. We had no say in the fact that our hard-earned taxpayer dollars are contributing to the merciless slaughter of Palestinian children and families. I have to scroll through social media seeing the mangled bodies of children, knowing that I am being forced to take part in these murders by my elected officials. You, our elected officials, have created an economy here in Dayton that relies on the existence of Israel, genocide, and war. So deeply are we entrenched in these violent affairs that any economic development efforts that happen here are dedicated toward the military and national and international weapons manufacturing companies. And this is only what we know about. There are a lot more shady activities, including trips to Israel by our elected officials, that the county and city commissions just conveniently don't have the records for anymore. Why aren't our economic development funds going towards the betterment of our local economy? Shouldn't we be supporting the development of local businesses rather than foreign economies? We refuse to contribute in any way to the genocidal entity that is Israel. With some key elections happening in the upcoming years, we are watching and we will remember. You have blood on your hands, please dump DREDA.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Alexander Gorman.
Good evening. My name is Alexander Gorman. I live at 133 Linden Avenue.
Evening.
Good evening. One of the, by its own documents, sales documents, DREDA presents itself in the following way, its benefits, right? Trade networks, as they grow, become self-reinforcing. As DREDA reaches, reduces the costs of these connections, it makes other connections easier. It also generates a path dependence, facilitating more trade. That's their own promotional materials. And this is precisely why we have been working to address this dilemma, the problem of path dependency, because by, we can't simply treat economic development as something that does not include other values, right? We want economic development, of course, but not, but at what, you know, what sort of development? Development that builds, you know, human development or development that is destructive? I mean, among, just to give a couple of examples as to why participating in trade partnerships, particularly with entities like Ashkelon and Elbit Systems, that these corporations have been involved in not just the ongoing genocide taking place in Gaza, but just a few days before October 7th, on October 5th, the Associated Press reported that Israel had been providing weapons and material to Azerbaijan, which was in the course of carrying out a, an ethnic cleansing of 100,000 Armenians in the Nagorno-Karabakh enclave. It was found that they were also supplying weapons to Myanmar while it was carrying out a genocide against the Rohingya people, displacing 1.5 million people. It had, Israel has also, before the end of apartheid in the late 80s, had longstanding relations and agreements with, with South Africa and other colonial states. Looking over the materials that we've recently been able to gain access to, what's also strange is that it's unclear exactly what the economic impact is. Like, the number of jobs that it supposedly creates is kind of blurry. The amount of investment that it invites is kind of multiplied by factors that don't seem to really have, that seem more like sales pitches than like real numbers.
Okay.
So we should pursue other avenues of development. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Fatima Gula?
Good evening.
Good evening. Name and address for the record.
Fatima Gula, 336 Miller Avenue, Dayton, Ohio. Good evening, again. I had the honor of speaking at the Martin Luther King Junior Banquet. For those who were there, you will remember that I said we will not compromise our beliefs and values, but hold strong onto our morality and ethics, so we are here. I want to say to the elected officials here, you do not get to tell Muslims, Arabs, and Palestinians who is more of an oppressor and danger to us while you support and work with our oppressors. When you support an ethno-state that is committing genocide, genocide is our red line, why isn't it yours? With Kamala Harris running for office, I want to say, representation is not liberation. You can weaponize identity politics all you want, but we see right through it. Lives matter more to us than a vote or any 2025 plan. However, our elected officials have shown us that Muslim, Arab, and Palestinian lives do not matter to them, so we will remember in November, and we will remember when it's time to vote for you. We are demanding change. Our people deserve dignity and respect as we are a proud and honorable people. When we say "Free Palestine," we mean it. It's not just a chant. We take our teachings of justice and put it into practice. Our faith in Allah is stronger than our fear of man, and Allah is sufficient for us. So I ask, will you continue to have relations with Israel, who is committing genocide and has killed 186,000 people, who is committing horrific war crimes? Or will you have the moral decency and be principled enough to cut ties with them, stop promoting lies about October 7th, end DREDA, denounce all forms of Zionism, call for a free Palestine, and make our Gem City shine in a world of darkness? We want a truthful, genuine answer, not something vague, not something that pampers to Israel or Zionist interests or is made to keep us quiet. If you cannot do these things, you will not receive our votes or supports any longer. I will end with a verse from the Quran. "Oh, you who believe, be persistently firm in justice as witnesses before God, even if it be against yourselves, your parents, and your relatives." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gorman.
Thank you for your comments.
Kevin Keller.
Kevin Keller, 3922 East 3rd Street, Dayton, Ohio, 45403. Good evening, Commissioners, City Manager, Audience.
Good evening.
I always will continue to advocate for our aviation heritage here in our Gem City as the Wright Brothers did. The Wright Brothers did not only invent the airplane, they advocated for airplane creation, not because they would benefit, but because they saw a vision, an idea of how much more life could be with their innovations. So we became a very innovative city. It seems like we've lost a little bit of that. I really think that through the Wright Brothers' inspiration, we can get back to that. And I hear that my, one of my favorite companies is hiring again, so we might be able to investigate that. Thank you, sir. What I'd also like to share is we create some sort of speed reduction policy or tactic on East 3rd Street coming down the hill from Smithville. We had an accident last, I think it was Friday night, the 24th, where guys are competing, coming down from Smithville, competing from where it goes from two lanes to one lane, and one guy ran the other guy off the road. I have video from one of our neighbors who's just, the cars, you can see the cars go by, the guy brake checks after he pulls in front, pick up, can't do anything else. He's pulling a trailer. The guy can't do anything else except go between a tree and the RTA pole, and he kind of missed. But it's a sad, sad scene to see this every couple months, an accident on that hill. And I, as, I live at the southwest corner of Quinton East 3rd, since I've lived there, there have been five accidents that have impacted my yard. And that's just unacceptable. We've got to find a better way to create safety down that hill. It's just wrong. Speed bump, something, a speed camera? I mean, get it out of these guys' pockets. Maybe they'll think twice about doing that kind of thing. Also, I certainly hope we can pay attention when we get all this money from raising the license fees to paving, that when, get our real money's worth and pave the areas that we need to pave. We need to pull off more of the asphalt so we don't, we don't clog the drains. The drains are getting so small during a heavy rain because there's so much blacktop on them, they don't crown the road well enough, and it floods. And that's not a good thing. I also hope that in this time that we're replacing all these gas lines, maybe the city can come around and help us take care of some of our sidewalks. Because of the city's trees that have been donated or planted and/or planted, they're breaking up the sidewalks, and that would be really nice if we got to do that. And also, the drug house, oh, honing. I don't understand why honing can't be, can't be reckless op, which can be sometimes under certain rules of felony. That, I think, would be a little bit more of a teeth in the law. And then also, is vacant houses? Why can't we use the vacant houses as an opportunity for people to?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Keller.
Have a purchase.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Keller. William Titus.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Will Titus. I live at 425 Dayton Towers Drive. On a similar note, what brings me here today is to ask for the prioritization and funding of safe roads throughout Dayton in lieu of the unsafe conditions on Wayne Avenue, East 3rd Street, and countless other roads across the city. If you're not aware, last week, a reckless driver hit a group crossing Wayne Avenue and dragged a nine-year-old girl, girl, almost half a mile on her bicycle. The current driving culture and road infrastructure within Dayton that causes innocent kids to be seriously injured is unacceptable. I'm aware a safety coalition was formed after a crash more than a year ago that killed a different innocent pedestrian, but I can't help but think there's a lack of urgency when at the same intersection, similar crashes occur end over end, month over month. When I called the city's engineering office last November after a different serious crash at Kiwi Street, near where the girl's bicycle ended up, I was told they were aware these streets are dangerous, yet they have no funding and are waiting on funding to make improvements. It appears that while the city claims safety is a priority, they're unwilling to fund it, and as if it was a priority, especially when we know these streets have been dangerous for years. When you look at the so-called safety improvements that do occur, say by Wayne Avenue at Kroger and proposed on Kiwi Street, they are just designing these sections of the road to make them like the section of Wayne Avenue that is already dangerous. It baffles me that we are spending millions of dollars at Wayne Avenue by Kroger just to make it the same as the rest of Wayne Avenue, when we know that section of Wayne Avenue is dangerous, we know people are dying on that road. When you take a second to think about that, it just doesn't make sense. So in lieu of making the same mistakes over and over again, the city should look into low-cost alternatives like Jersey barriers, planter boxes, protected bike lanes, curb cutouts, and raised crosswalks. These will actually improve safety because until the size of the road and vehicle speeds are reduced, they will continue to be dangerous for all users, pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. How the city spends its money and designs its road network says a lot about a city's priority. And right now, it appears that safety is not a priority for the City of Dayton and that driving fast is more important than driving safe. I urge you all as Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, to change the city's priorities and take a safety-first approach to Dayton's roads that emphasize the need to urgently improve safety. Multi-million dollar road expansions that take years to plan and maintain the status quo will not do that. Narrowing streets using low-cost barriers and other traffic calming measures will be safer, cheaper, and faster to implement, and I hope that all of you will consider implementing them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Titus.
Thank you for your comments.
Carlo Hurd.
Good evening. Carlo Hurd, 1485 Benson Drive, Dayton, Ohio, 45406. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, and to all distinguished officials gathered in this space.
Good evening, again. Back to you. Say, "Good evening."
Oh, you just took up five seconds, Mayor.
I will put it back on your clock.
I am speaking on behalf of Brian Moody, 16-year-old child who was killed by a Dayton police officer. In the autobiography of Frederick Douglass, he recounts the time when he witnessed the murder of a fellow slave named Demby by an overseer named Austin Gore. When Austin Gore was attempting to whip Demby, Demby ran into a lake and refused to come out. Mr. Gore told Demby that he would give him three calls, and that if he did not come out by the third call, that he would shoot him. Ignoring all three calls, Demby stayed in the water, and Mr. Gore then, without consultation or deliberation from anyone, he raised his musket, and in an instant, Demby was no more. Mr. Gore was allowed to continue in his position. His crime was never submitted to a judicial investigation, and here's why. It was a crime committed in the presence of slaves who could neither institute a suit nor testify against him. This was written nearly 180 years ago, and from the looks of it, not much has changed. While the comparison may seem extreme and make some uncomfortable, please know that that is the purpose of my presence here today, as I speak on behalf of a child who was not afforded due process of the law. I am again here to plead with you that if there is footage that shows Brian Moody pointing a gun at your officer, please show us that video. Show us why your officer feared for his life. The idea that this video has not been shown so as not to further traumatize the community is not acceptable, not acceptable, especially when the full uncut body cam video that shows Illinois resident Sonya Massey being murdered by police in her own home has been shown in its entirety on every news platform on planet Earth. I assure you that by producing this video will not further traumatize a community whose residents already live in a state of trauma. What is traumatizing is your department's feeble attempts to dehumanize a 16-year-old child by depicting him as some thug that is individual whose life consisted of gang activity and who was poised to have a shootout with police in broad daylight. And while that narrative has sufficed a large part of this community, I am not convinced. On behalf of Brian Moody and the community of which he was a part of for 16 short years, I am asking that you all make it make sense. And if it does not make sense, then this officer needs to be held accountable for his actions. What is the status of this investigation? It's been 31 days since this child was killed in the presence of multiple witnesses, or is the testimony of these witnesses equivalent to that of slaves? Your actions will determine or make that answer for me.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Robin Hurd. Platini Mahaffey? Name and address for the record.
My name is Platini Mahaffey. My address is 1721 Benson Drive, Dayton, Ohio, 45406. Unfortunately, I'm coming up here because I have, I feel like I've tried everything I possibly can, called police, called ARC, mediation, I'm looking for venues, there's what I perceive to kind of be a simple issue in my neighborhood at the address, I won't say the address, but at the corner of Harvard and Philadelphia, there's there's a dog that sits outside from 7:00 or 8:00 a.m. in the morning to 9:00 p.m. in the evening every single day. The fence is open. The street is busy. It's Philadelphia and Harvard. There's bus stops on each corner. This black German Shepherd with a white underbelly just barks at every car that drives by, every person that rides a bike, anybody. I have footage of it. I record it. It's going on two years now. On a daily basis, the dog is out there barking. I pleaded with police to do something about it. For some reason, they're not taking action, or they're just, I don't know, they're kind of... Police say ARC should handle barking dogs. ARC say police should do it. There, there's another entity too, that they just kind of pass the buck on amongst each other. And then I have a second dog, one street over from me on Burbank Avenue, and one house over. Between the hours of 12 a.m. and 5 a.m. every single morning for the past two or three months, it'll wake up for 10 minutes, 30 minutes, an hour, and just bark randomly. 12, 12 a.m., 2, 2 a.m., 3 a.m. It will force me awake. I'll record my home phone, and then I will call the police if I can, and then I'll record it on my phone for the 20, 30 minutes that it's barking. Told the police that, told them I have evidence. They're not moving. I can't sleep. It affects my family. I've spoken with neighbors in my neighborhood that say they have the same issues. I've called the police probably over 100 times, or around 100 times in the past two years. So I'm just looking for contacts, direction, some sort of resolution to help my neighborhood out. That's what I came up here for. So I don't know if at the end of the meeting, I can speak, speak with somebody.
Yes, be happy to. But since you want, just as you take your seat, just let you know that's a humane society responsibility. I'd be happy to get, we're not debating here, but be happy to get some more information from you once you sit down.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahaffey. That is all, your honor.
Okay, thank you. Ms., Mr. Parlet?
We switched it up on you.
Right, I see. It's under my eye. Any closing comments?
I have none, your honor.
Okay. Ms. Blackshire, any closing comments?
I have none, your honor.
Commissioners, any closing comments? Ms., Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I would like to thank Mr. Donald. Thank you for your briefing this, this evening. Thank you very much for the updates and all the great work that you are doing. Mr. Alzane, Ms. Anna, Mr. Gorman, Ms. Fatima Goma, as well as... I think that's, I apologize. Thank you all for being here this evening. I really appreciate your comments. And thank you, as noted, I stand with you in your, your advocacy in knowing what the tragedies that we are dealing with overseas. And again, I appreciate you all taking the time to be here this evening and your continued leadership and know that we have to continuously stand together against what is occurring overseas. Mr. Keller, thank you for your comments and thank you for your continued advocacy in, in the space of aviation. You'll be happy to know, we just received an update today, this, this evening, this afternoon, rather, excuse me, from our airport director, Mr. Gil Turner, who noted that there will in fact be an aviation job fair. I believe it's September the 19th, and more details about that. And so we'll be happy to share that information with you. And then in regards to the sidewalks and the curb outs, there are a number of contracts that we have approved thus far. I believe that, is that correct, Mr. Parlet? In terms of addressing some of those issues and, and reference to, again, the sidewalks and the curb out repairs? Those are some things that we have looked at with our ARPA, ARPA dollars, our Dayton Recovery Plan. And then last but not least, we can talk after the meeting. Yes, and I apologize, excuse me. Wanted to get you before you get scolded by the mayor, so... But nonetheless, I also wanted to mention too, in reference to, to the, the honing. Mayor, if I'm not correct, and I'm sure you will address this, but just last week, Mr. Beckham and the mayor traveled to Columbus in advocating for legislation to make sure that we have the proper procedures, if you will, and, and policies in place to make sure that we are in fact criminalizing that activity. And I'm sure the mayor can speak more to that and to provide the additional details on that. Mr. Titus, thank you, sir, for, for being here. Your concerns are definitely warranted. We hear you. We are actively moving, actively working to address those concerns. And as you already alluded to, there is a safety coalition, and there is work that's being done. And Mr. Parlet or Ms. Lofton or even the city manager, they can elaborate. Mr. Escobar is not here this evening, but again, there is work that is continuously being done on Wayne Avenue, Kiwi. I believe it was just last week or maybe even two weeks ago where there was some additional funding that, and contracts that we approved to address those, those concerns in terms of the, the safety provisions. And your recommendations are in fact considered, and they are being implemented in those updates that are being, improvements that are being made. Mr. Hurd, Reverend Hurd, thank you for your comments and thank you for being here. Mr. Fatima Mahaffey, thank you, sir, for being here. I appreciate your concerns and note that they are in fact warranted. They are the concerns of many of us in the neighborhoods. I know I have the same issue in my neighborhood. I would encourage that you contact the Mediation Center. We'll be happy to give you that information, to give you that number so that we see if there is a means to extend an olive branch to address those concerns. And then, Mr. Parlet, I will just lean on you to see if there's anything in addition we can do with some support from DPD, our police department, and figuring out how we can align those, those concerns with, as well as the ARC, the Animal Resource Center as well. This is an ongoing issue. Don't necessarily have a, an answer for you, but know that we're actively working along with the stray dogs, the, the pit bulls and a number of things. I will tell you, I, I, I hear your concerns, the same concerns. I have a neighbor who literally has nine pit bulls in their home, in a residential home. So it is an ongoing issue, and we are doing everything that we can possibly, humanly do, possible to address those concerns. So again, thank you for being here, and please stay after so we can have further conversation. Lastly, just wanted to encourage everyone, if your schedule permits, the Omega Baptist Church, along with other clergy members and community leaders, will be holding a community conversation on Thursday, August 1st at 6 p.m. at Omega Baptist Church, 1821 Emerson Avenue. Again, this conversation is then realized in regards to a number of incidents that have taken place in the city of Dayton in reference to the violence, the string of events that have taken place in, with gun violence. And then, Commissioner, I'm sure you will probably speak on this, but Black Pride is this Saturday at McIntosh Park from 12, I think, from 12 to 6 p.m. So I encourage people to come out as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Veat Chow.
Actually, I'm going to be a man of few words tonight. Commissioner, I appreciate your words and listening up to the Black Pride event this Saturday and recognition of our citizens who have come and spoke and brought your concerns before us. Appreciate your advocacy, so, thank you.
Okay.
I'm good.
Commissioner Chow.
Nothing here. Thank you.
Okay, nothing. Just, to go back just for a moment, on the issue of honing, this House Bill 56, which was passed and signed by the governor, this passed, actually, a week ago today. That particular bill addresses reckless driving, doing donuts in the street, and it gives the police a lot of authority to confiscate vehicles, to arrest those individuals who are participating in that process, and those individuals who are also blocking the police from getting to those who are committing the concerns that we are talking about. This has caused us a lot of situations in the city of Dayton, some of which has led to deaths. Two years ago, we had these four people who died because they were either falling out of a car or they were running or trying to get away from the police as they were trying to create some safety situations for those who were there. Additionally, the aspect of how these situations continue to plague us is still concerning. The aspect of what we're looking at in terms of violence, as is mentioned by Commissioner Turner-Sloss, I'm looking forward to being at that meeting tomorrow as well to help understand what's happening as best we can and also to help present some of the solutions that we have down the road in terms of addressing those concerns as well. Additionally, I want to share that on this Sunday, there will be a memorial to help recognize and show honor to those who lost their lives in Oregon District four years ago. 1:30 at the trolley stop, and again, from 3:00 to 4:00 at the trolley stop. So if you have the opportunity to stop by and just pay some respect to those who were involved in that situation. I'm thinking that I don't have anything else with no further business to come before this commission. This meeting is adjourned.